I would know that.
I lived in the Fort Worth area.
Yeah, good guy, wasn't he?
Yeah, I was.
And I miss him as well. I have my sister here tonight as well. She's lived here all her life as well. I've been in the home buying business the last little while. We lived in Vancouver, Washington. Buryal spots down here. And we've been around and we have homes in both places. And decided we wanted to live in Spanish Fork to rest the rest of our days. So we came down here and my wife's health has been bad. So we had the four day week where we could come down here and we bought a home in March 2013. We used an agent. We looked at the home. It was in the east area, whatever it is, two zero zero Highlands, Spanish Highlands area. Lived in. It was a model home basically to be showed. Our home in Vancouver had sold at the time. And we knew we'd have to move in. So we came down here and our home sale failed in Vancouver as some homes do fail to sell. And we had to stay there. Then my wife got sick and so we couldn't come until November of last year. So our home had been purchased, paid for, and we were planning to move in, but we didn't get here until November. We did the little things, you know, you do before you buy a home. I told them before we left to please backfill and make corrections as needed. We bought this from Ivory Homes. When we got down here in November, we made arrangements so that we wouldn't lose our fifteen hundred dollars that you get back for landscaping the home. So we had a little leeway. If we'd have bought it, if we kept it going like in buying it in March, we wouldn't have had much room after November to landscape the home. So they were very good about that. And by the way, I want you to know that we do like the area. We love the community. We don't plan to leave here except for the box. Now, I don't even want to go. I arranged for a landscaper because we have some difficulty health-wise and we had a man do our house. And coming in November, I inspected the basement further and found some slumped concrete down there above the sewer line that extended out of the house. It was, I put a bar, a railing from a far bed across it and it was about four inches between the sides and the center. So it had slumped four inches. And that wasn't going to go in my mind. My brother-in-law, who's a builder in California, said, "Oh, Bob," and he calls me Bob, "it will not be a problem." I says, "To me, it is a problem. What happens if the sewer line has actually settled and there would be a problem with the rain later?" And whatever. I got worried. And they have a warranty department. And the warranty people came and looked at it and said, "Oh, yeah, we'll fix that. No problem." I think it has taken actually from November till now and it's still not quite finished. But they did come in with their workers and they cut it out with a concrete saw after we'd furnished our house and put curtains up and doodads and this and that. And concrete dust got over everywhere. And it would become a problem for my wife and their health as well. Needless to say, it was a little bit nerve-wracking, but we were going to get this fixed. They got two guys in, cut the concrete, came back later, two more guys to cut the concrete, dug it out, put rebar across and with buckets of cement, brought their buckets of cement in and smoothed it off and fixed it. Brought the workers in later to clean it up. Three workers worked a whole day and it was supposedly clean. Well, it wasn't clean. If you've ever had cement dust in your home, it gets everywhere. I mean, everywhere. So we asked them to come back. They came back and did it. And in the meantime, I looked around on the floor of the basement and on the floor were footprints, boot footprints of the construction workers. But they'd poured this in the wintertime and the cement had not been firm and they'd walked in it trying to get up ahead of time. So they'd walked with their cement working boots all over the concrete. I said, "What about this?" To the warranty people. "This is going to work? This will not work. You've got to take care of this." So they called a highfalutin guy named Jim in Salt Lake who does concrete repairs as such. He came down, spent a whole day with his partner, sanded down the, all of the spots where it was bad concrete, put in filler and sanded it off and said, "Here you are. Get Ivory Homes to come in and vacuum this and clean it up." Well, Ivory Homes didn't want to come back and do it again. So they gave me kind of a bad time. The last time I talked to them, they said, "Well, we've spent a lot of time on that repair down there. What you'll do is you go ahead and do it and have somebody do it and send us the bill." I said, "Well, how much are you going to be liable for?" And then they said a hundred dollars. And I said to myself, "That is not going to ever fly. I'll never ask for a hundred dollars because it's an affront to me." So I took my high-powered vacuum that I went and bought at Home Depot, came home, vacuumed it myself, brought a brand-new mop, mopped the whole thing, and I've sealed it now so the concrete is sealed, no dust can come out. So that's taken care of. Ivory did say that they would come back and clean the squirrel cage in the furnace. So they came back and they cleaned the squirrel cage. It was coated with sawd, with the concrete dust. I said to them, I said, "Well, can you come back and clean the vents, the flues?" "Oh, yeah." I haven't heard a thing from them. So I've just been a little bit disgruntled with the warranty follow-up on that home. This is not particularly about warranty follows-up, follow-up in this, in this meeting here is, according to me. But it's about concrete and requirements for concrete and settlement around the home, backfill and so forth. In doing my research for this, by the way, we did the landscaping. The landscape sunk fifteen inches on one side next to the foundation. They sent me a picture and the picture shows the backfill. Well, the backfill looks pretty good, but there are no bobcat tracks between the window wells. There's been no compaction. And so when the rain came and the sod was in, it poured toward the foundation and it sunk fifteen inches along that side. So I called Ivory Homes up and I said, "Would you please, you know, could you fix that or help us fix that?" By the, by the time that was up, when, one year, we can't do it because you're... I said, "Okay, we'll fix it ourselves because I'm not going to have a home with slumping." It was sloping toward the foundation instead of away. So my, my landscape fella and I brought soil in, dug the grass out and the sod along there which had been laid, took the sprinkler system back and my landscaper and I paid for that. It has not slumped around the rest of the foundation fortunately, so I think the rest of it's all right, but it did cause a little bother to me. So I'm concerned, I'm concerned about compaction around foundations and concrete. And I know some of you, some of you are into, into concrete or construction or what have you. I've talked to a number of concrete people here in this town as well as landscapers. And I found out more than I need to know and probably more than most people want me to know, but I know a little bit more about backfill, a little more about concrete, a little more about winter weather pouring. I called a guy named John Little who works for the city. He's the chief inspector and asked him to come out and see the slumping of the concrete against the wall. He said, "This, this happens." I said, "Well, why does it happen?" And he said, "Because in the town, we have a rule that says you can backfill whatever you take out." I said, "Okay, well, that's interesting." And I said, "Okay, is there anything, any recourse I have?" He says, "No, except fix it." And then I went to my neighbor's house, which was next door, lot 131, 130. They were just starting to excavate it. And I paid a little bit of attention to the lot that was being excavated by Ivory Homes. I actually had code. And as they were excavating, I went over and took a soil sample as part of my presentation. And I filled this cup up to about right yea on June 11th with backfill, with stuff that came out of the foundation. And I let it sit on my workbench for a week and a half. Looks like a good rock to me. And it is.
It's called yellow clay.
Yes, called yellow clay. And then I found in my, in the fine print of my contract, it said they've done engineering on this lot. The first foot is topsoil. The next thirteen feet is clay and sand or some sand. So I wasn't surprised that I found a little bit of clay randomly found in my neighbor's driveway. Then I looked at the, and I've got pictures here if you care to look at them, pictures of the excavation. And you can see the strata of the clay and the strata of the sand. And I've asked several concrete people, "What do you do with clay?" Well, if you've walked around east of Spanish Fork on a plowed field and it's been raining, you get clay on your feet. It's really soggy and becomes heavy and it's hard. After a while, it comes hard on you. "Oh, I messed up your podium." "Oh, did they clean in here?"
Didn't you say you got a new vacuum?
A new what?
Didn't you get a new vacuum to clean your basement so you might come up here and take it?
It's actually quite worn out.
Oh, sorry.
It's, it's been used. I've talked to John a couple of times. He's been very helpful, but his hands are tied and he thinks that, and I suppose this is still what he thinks, I don't know. He says that that's the rules of the city building. And I thought, "I'm going to question that just a little bit because I'm not sure that that's true. It may be. I don't know. I haven't gotten the Uniform Building Code. I haven't looked at that as a copy. I'm sure that the city fathers," and by the way, I want you to know that I appreciate you, Mayor, and your councilmen, "and all you do for the city, this is volunteer. And other people who have been, who I've talked to here are very helpful and I appreciate I went around to my homeowner's next door to me, not before this even. "How is your foundation? You having any troubles with it? You have any settling?" "Yeah." "How's, how's the concrete? How's the driveway? How's the sidewalks?" And so I decided one day, this is last week, to go to some homes right adjacent to our home. Knocked on about sixteen, eighteen houses. Some weren't home, most were, and many were very cooperative to me. I asked two questions. Have you had any settling around your foundation? If so, would you show it to me or tell me about it? Second question. Have you had any concrete issues with your driveway, with your sidewalks? Is it slumping? Is it cracking? Is it... Ivory Homes guarantees their concrete work for one year. Have you had to have report, have you had to have work? Of those sixteen, eighteen people, seventy to eighty percent had had concrete or settling issues at their new homes. These are all new homes. They're not old homes. And I didn't pick on any other contractor besides Ivory because that's, I'm working from that knowledge of an Ivory homeowner. What I've found out and observed, I've watched Ivory Homes being built, I've gone all over the areas they put their homes in, from my neighbors to the other ones. They bring the backfill in, which they took out and they put it in there. And they might use a knuckle tamper to go around part of it. They bring very little gravel around the foundation. They do put gravel along the sewer lines, along the water lines, along other places, garages, basements. But they, they don't spend much time with a hand tamper around the foundation. They don't put a lot of gravel in there and I haven't only seen one, and that's my next-door neighbor who I've informed as he was buying this home, "Please make sure they put water on your backfill." And they were in there putting water on it and using a tamper the other day before they pour concrete tomorrow. So they're responding. I think it's important. Specific issues, like I said, are concrete and backfill. There should be standards for those things. And I'll mention just briefly the things that I'm asking the city council to address or take care of or have a committee or what have you to address these because there are eighty to more than a hundred homes, new ones, being built by us up there. And I see what they do with their double trucks being brought in. Backfill from where? I don't know where they're getting, but this, the land was sloped down and they, they filled in there now about fifteen feet. So whatever they're going to dig to make those homes has been brought in and not allowed to settle over the wintertime. They brought their trucks in, their water trucks, and they've gone around with their heavy equipment and tamped it down. I would like to have standards for backfill material that are more, less loosely than I've seen. So you don't have fifteen inches alongside the foundation. A home up the street that is being built by a builder used twenty or thirty thousand gallons of water to do around his foundation, brought in gravel all the way around. I think other people can do that too. There are two major home builders here who do not do that. One major home builder that does it, and I'll tell you their name. Their name is Edge Homes. They actually backfill with some gravel and they go around and sprinkle it and they tape a tamper all the way around the foundation. This is the foundation I'm talking about. They do it also for the, for the other concrete. From what I've heard, and I haven't scientifically investigated this yet, but I could, I think they do a better job and I think the stuff doesn't have a failure rate like Ivory Homes has. I think there should be a compaction technique or at least some sort of a standard for that and somebody to inspect it. I think that concrete, when it's put adjacent to other concrete, should be pinned with rebar to stop the movement because I've seen too many times where corners will show me a sidewalk here and another sidewalk over here has been put in additionally later, not pinned in. And what happens? My neighbor who had her grandfather come to see her this last winter, a puddle on the sidewalk in front. The sidewalk also slanted at about twenty degrees or so. The grandfather fell and hurt himself seriously. I don't think that needed to be done. I think it could be avoided. Sure, you can sand on there, ice, whatever stuff you use down there. I think that water use should be used in compaction. Mine compacted after I put landscaping in and the water flowed toward the foundation with the rain and my sprinkler system, which was drip irrigation along that side, that was compacted with that water, but not the way I wanted it. I want the water to run away from the foundation, not to worry. I think temperature conditions for doing cement, it shouldn't be done when it's cold. I don't think people need to see footprints of workers in concrete. I think if you do it when it's too cold and it rains on top of the compacted material, I think that all should come out as a concrete man told me it should all come back out and redone. The gravel, new compaction and then cement it right away. I think there should be inspections for all flatwork. Flatwork is not inspected, to my knowledge. John said it wasn't inspected. Maybe he was wrong. Maybe I'm wrong. Maybe it's in the codes. I think flatwork should be inspected. So underneath the grab, underneath the cement that's being poured, there's actually good material. It's not muddy. It's not, it's not clay. My logic for all of these things are, number one, it costs less to do it right first. Every contractor, every builder, every owner of a business would say that. Costs less to do it right the first time. Save money. Warranty delays are costly is another reason for do it. Warranty delays are costly for homeowners and for builders. It takes time. It's a bother. It's not necessary if you do, if there's standards there. And so what I'm advocating are standards for this. It also makes people who come to Spanish Fork to buy a, buy a house, don't wonder if there's any... I'm not mad at Ivory Homes. I'd tell them the same thing I'm telling you. And I have told them that. I think that they should be proud of what they do and they should look up when they go down the street. And they should be, after the first year's gone and the whole, the cement shipped, they should be interested in a reputation that's admirable. Yes, I know that there's a bottom line for every business and you can only do it so long to help people out a little bit. I think their reputation in the city is pretty important. Their reputation as a... At home and they ask me, "Who would you buy from?" I say, "I would go up to Edge Homes and watch their construction and see how they prepare the lot for building a house." And I don't know anything about Edge. I know he's the owner of the place, is a bishop of my family's, one of my siblings' ward. That doesn't mean anything. I don't know anything about Ivory Homes except the president of Ivory Homes is going on a mission somewhere. Well, that doesn't mean anything. I think the reputation of the construction business and the reputation of the city are I hope, appreciate you coming and listening to me. I hope I haven't rambled on. If you have questions about what I said, I'd be glad to address them. If you would like or be interested in having some of these homeowners or others who have had difficulties with their cement or their backfill, come and speak with you. It might be enlightening. I think it's important we improve our city. I like this place here. I have a heritage here. I'm not leaving. And I want it to make, I want to make it as better as I can. Thank you very much. Any questions? I'll be glad to answer.
I'd like to answer. Unfortunately, we don't have inspectors that can do all of what you're asking to do.
I understand, I understand that.
We have inspectors, the foundation, to make sure the quality's there. We have our inspectors come and inspect your plumbing for health reasons, your electrical for safety reasons, framing for, you know, reasons. But I can name a hundred things in building that you ought to do that, that don't happen because contractors come in to build a home for you and try to get you in as fast as you can.
Well, there's a trust factor that's there that's an unwritten factor.
I mean, I can go, that it needs to settle a little bit before you put your sheet rock on. I mean, I can name a lot of things that ought to be done but aren't done, but that's called building and trying to get you in your home in a proper perspective. As far as your concrete work, your floor downstairs, that should be left to your contractor or your engineer that draws up a set of plans and specifically states, "I would like a ninety-five percent compaction on a floor," because that will happen then. And then the paperwork would be handed to our inspector showing that that was done before the concrete was poured. But that has to be done by an engineer or an architect and the contractor. And just like you say, you gave us two contractors. That shows, you know? We, we never asked the one contractor that you said was doing it right on his backfill, but he does it because of his experience on, on settling.
It's available too.
That yellow clay does settle and it needs water if, in order to make it... And it's going to settle eventually as it rains, you know? A lot, you see a lot of contractors come in and they pour the driveways after they've done their foundations before it's even framed. I mean, you know what's going to happen when that happens? There's a lot of things that can happen. There's cold that could cause bad concrete. I mean, if they don't cover it, heat it, you know, in the winter, if it's below thirty-two degrees, I mean, concrete's going to freeze just like anything else. It could be the same way with heat. I mean, if it's too hot, you've got to put curing compounds and everything else to protect your concrete. A contractor, a subcontractor come in there and pour the concrete too wet, you know? You know, they, they have tests that can do that with slump tests and air qualities and all that other things. And you've probably heard all this. But it's not the responsibility that the city to do that, not even, you know, when they build commercial buildings. It's up... To do those things. Papers to the city to show that it's done properly. So you're, you're talking about... Do good work or bad work? It depends on what you want to buy, you know? And, and you, a lot of them utilize the dirt that's there to backfill. And whether they do it and lift, help settle that yellow clay and put gravel in it too and all the other things, that's the contractor and the homeowner and everything else. And, and then it's your responsibility to take care of it afterwards, you know? In the fall, do you, do you put sealer on your concrete?
Absolutely.
Well, you should because when, in the wintertime, you're driving on these roads that have salt on it and you come onto your driveway and your car sits there and all that ice falls off and, and it eats that concrete up. And, and it could be the best concrete in the world and it might, it'll not look bad a year later because you didn't protect it and take care of it yourself.
Are you saying, Mr. Davis, that the city has no way to monitor all of this so that a homeowner can in the end result, after he pays these three hundred thousand dollars for this house, he can't feel secure?
We do our basics, we do our basics inspections and it's up to the contractor and the engineer or whoever drew those plans to give us those, to give the specs to the builder so that we have those specs so he doesn't, so when he comes... Paperwork is done for him. So he doesn't have, we don't have time to go do, do compaction tasks. We don't, we, we don't have time to sit there and watch somebody pour a driveway to make inch slump that looks like water coming out or, or making sure that the air entrainment in, in concrete is, is what it should be to pour the driveway or pour your basement floors or pour your foundations. That should be up to the engineer and the contractor.
Should there be more stringent, I'm sorry, interrupt you. Should there be more standards or clearer standards for the engineer and the contractor to be under?
I think once he, once he does all those inspections that I talked about, then it's up to the contractor and the way he does it and the engineer to do it right.
Me lying in an airplane, have four days to look for a home. I'm having a hard time finding who does what. It's a lot of faith and a lot of trust you have and you have to live by that trust.
Well, a lot of, a lot of, a lot of people, you know, do their, do their homework when they look for a home, you know? And you, you've been going around doing this, you know, doing your homework since...
I know a lot.
And, and so now you have looked and found contractors that you think does the best job.
No, I don't think he does the best job. I'm saying this one...
But, but, but you're happy with what's going on and you're a little happier with...
In this particular little area.
Okay. Well, anyway, that's, that's the, that's the, that's what you'd look for. And, and we do our very best as a city to try to find those inspections and do the right things for the contractor. But as far as, I mean, qual, our looks and cosmetics and things like that, we're sort of, our hands are tied when it comes to that. They're not going to come and look to make sure that they rebar into your foundation and things like that, which they should. Any, any concrete contractor that's a good concrete contractor will do that. The best concrete in the world is not the concrete, it's what's underneath, just like you said.
Absolutely.
Proper degree and everything else, then you're going to have settling and everything else and no matter what he does, you know, you're... Ten foot and less to, to, so that the cracks follow the, the, but, but that's, doesn't work all the time because concrete cracks.
It does.
And it not... I can tell you that. But anyway. But anyway.
Yeah, and part of that too, if you're gonna put an outlay of three hundred thousand dollars, then you probably ought to make those questions. Did you compact my foundation? Did you, you pin everything? You know, 'cause you put out a pretty good investment and, and most home buyers need to have a list and say, okay, is this, show me your compaction test. Show me that you've done this. Are you gonna come back and do that for us? You know, it's, it's a problem. I know. We're both in the business, you know, and, and so we understand it's frustrating, you know? And in certain areas of the city, you've got those where you need that. Can take that under.
In town, there's gravel. You don't
Yep, yeah. So, you know, different parts of town, it's, it's great, but others it's not. But we understand your frustrations. We have our frustrations here with the city. I mean, we'll look at it. We appreciate your you know, and maybe there's something we might be able to look at and, and.
I, I can do my own things and I'll probably do it.
And that's great. I wish you would because that helps educate everybody out there. And the more education we get, it probably helped whoever's listening to us tonight because if they're thinking about buying a home, now when they go to buy a home, they're gonna say, I want that foundation compacted, so I don't want any settlement. And maybe you write that in your contract.
I did something a little more bold than that. I made a sign for my front yard. If you're going to buy an Ivory home, come and see me before you sign the paper.
Well, there you go.
Now, that, that's, that's legal. That's fair and I'll be honest with them. From my experience, you better be careful. And you're right, having those compaction statements, but a statement is just a statement. Doesn't mean the guy who, the Hispanic guy that came and cut our concrete out of the basement would do a good job. He came without masks.
And that's why you ask for different, and get recommendations of people and feel comfortable with what you got? I mean, 'cause it's, there's a lot of people out there and
I'm understanding that. But to do that with my sick wife and me coming down in four days is asking an unreasonable thing, I think. But you're right, unreasonable person who's had bought several homes in their lifetime, all, a lot of them new homes, who've trusted the builders and who have still found problems in the homes after you move in.
Well, I'll guarantee you, most homes have problems.
Yes, I understand.
You're not gonna, you're not gonna have a perfect home.
I understand that. So. I, I don't think that I've resolved anything here. I don't know whether you'll take this up in committee and talk about this or assign a committee to think about it or find some sort of standard for compaction and for flatwork. There really should be one. I, I would urge you.
Mr. Warner, we, we have talked to building inspector and I've talked to a couple of our engineers since Mr. Little brought this up to me a week ago. And so, I knew you were gonna come in and I, you know, and we, we've done a little homework and we've been a little talking.
I'm glad you didn't, I heard you had. Yeah, my builder guy up there I talked to today, I said, I guess you know, I'm a little ticked off, but I don't walk on the other side of the street because I like you, builder guy, but something has to be solved.
And we want, we do want our, our citizens to come and talk to us.
I've talked to you and I might come again because I have something else on my mind.
Great.
Does that bother you?
Nope, not at all.
Well, next time, make sure you get on the agenda and don't get on our three.